All we need is one study coming out that says medical gas causes cancer. The next thing you know, everything's all topsy-turvy again.
Do you want to talk about it?
Some of your board members out there in the...
I think Lisa Badger.
Ah, doesn't surprise me. There she is. During the election, I had tried to have a civil conversation.
I'm waiting for her.
It's on Facebook thinking that CJ and I had something to do with science. I ran into her on election night. We'll put the signs out or the night before.
He's up for us.
I've got signs on this one too. This is about 57.
Chair will call the May 7, 2019 meeting in the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Sinore.
Here.
Alderman Turner. Alderwoman Turner. Alderman Filginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMeniman.
Here.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Alderman Han Aaron.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Miss one meeting and see what happens.
Mr. Chairman or Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Sorry to report that former Alderman of Ward III, Ray Rowden, had passed away over the weekend. He served as Alderman from 1991 to 1999 and on the Civil Service Commission from 2007 to 2019. Always had Springfield in his heart, so I'd ask everybody to have a moment of silence for former Alderman Ray Rowden. We do have several presentations. First, I'd like to introduce Bonnie Drew, Deputy Mayor, with regards to the Mayor's Youth Council. We're going to have each one of them come up and give a short presentation. Then we do have a Certificates of Honor to give to them, and we have representation, not particularly tonight, but on the Mayor's Youth Council with regards to all our high schools. And they've done a great job this year, especially with regards to the city tournament and bringing our young people together and on different activities. So Bonnie, if you'd like to say anything?
Yes, for just a moment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Aldermen and Alderwomen. Today, we have the Mayor's Youth Council. They're here to give us kind of a year-end wrap-up. You'll see that not all of our students are here, but we have band, we have chorus, we have sports, we have drama, we have AP classes, we have end-of-year going on. But these young people have devoted their time and energies to the Mayor's Youth Council, and we really appreciate everything that they've added to it. So now, I'd like to turn it over to Kayla Sek, who is the President of this year's Student Council.
Hello, my name is Kayla Sek, and I'm from Sacred Heart Griffin High School. As the school year is drawing to a close, we, as the Mayor Youth Council, would like to come before you one last time to discuss a few of the things we have accomplished. From the unity bracelets, volunteer events, and our talent show, the 2018-2019 school year has been a success for our council. In a few moments, a representative from each school will address one event in particular and reflect on what it meant to them personally. I'll start off by discussing the 2019 District 186 Roundtable Shadow Week. Graciously, the Roundtable invited members of the Mayor Youth Council to participate in their student exchange program, where students pair up to experience a day at a different school. I spent the day with a fellow Mayor Council member, Abby Hunt, from Lamphier. During my day at Lamphier, I noticed that Lamphier and SHG were more similar than I had ever expected. Certainly, there was a different atmosphere, but Abby and I took almost the same exact classes in which we were learning the same exact concepts nearly lesson for lesson. Additionally, I was met with welcoming faces that all made me feel at home at Lamphier, even though I'd only been there for a day. I think Abby felt the same way when she was at SHG as well. In short, I truly believe that the student exchange program allowed me to see a better perspective into the lives of my peers, going hand-in-hand with our unity in our community
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Samuel Growth, and I've had the honor of representing Lutheran High School on the Mayor's Youth Council this year. For my part of this evening, I will be sharing about our first service project that we did. We wanted to be active in helping the homeless community in Springfield, so we chose to provide a meal for the winter warming center. We provided that meal on December 27th, which happened to be over spring break, so we had to coordinate a little bit outside of our meetings and talk about it, but in the end, it worked out, and we're so honored that we got to do it. And I'd like to hand it over to Stuart.
Hello, my name is Stuart Ross.
And I'm Paige Price.
And we're representatives from Southeast High School. Each year, the high schools of District 186 and Sacred Heart Griffin all compete in the boys' basketball tournament. City Tournament is meant to bring schools together, especially in school spirit. It always gets competitive, but this fierce competition caused a few problems this year, and there's conflict between two schools.
When the Mayor's Youth Council heard about these problems, we'd all decided to take action that would bring the community together. We decided to make bracelets that represented each school with their school colors. The bracelets say "Unity in Our Community," and we passed them out at the Springfield versus Southeast basketball game, where we also got featured in the State Journal Register. Our goal was to send the message that it's more important to come together as schools and have fun than it is to compete and win. I think that we were successfully, we successfully reached our goal, and because of the hard work and dedication that we had, there's a stronger bond between the schools now.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Green, and I'm a representative from Sacred Heart Griffin High School. This year was our second annual All-City Youth Talent Show. The talent show took place on April 4th at Southeast High School. Our council worked so hard to put on the show to include acts from District 186, Sacred Heart Griffin, and Lutheran High School. From December to April, the council planned and organized the talent show by promoting our event, collecting acts, and encouraging members of the community to attend. Despite many obstacles on picking a date and location, we had a great turnout for the talent show. At the event, we had the opportunity to pass out bracelets that the Mayor's Youth Council designed, which promote unity among the schools. The talent show had a wide variety of acts, from singing to poetry to juggling, that had representatives from all the area schools. We also included a visual arts portion that featured artwork from area high school students. The talent show was a wonderful event and opportunity to showcase our students' talents while also continuing our mission to create unity in our community.
Good evening. I'm Zaire Harris, senior from Springfield High School. During this past year, I've had the honor of being the 2018-2019 District 186 Student Board Member, as well as being on Mayor's Youth Council. And touching on a few things that my peers talked on, the big thing with the bracelets, being an athlete that was participating in the city tournament and seeing how usually when problems arise, that adults are the first one to take action. But in this case, it was the students that really took the initiative to kind of get things mended between the schools. And having the Mayor's Council was able to get input from all four high schools and other high schools in the area, having those people there that we could talk to and kind of fix the problems ourselves within ourselves instead of having to go to outside sources was really important to me as an athlete and a leader in this community. Now, one thing that we touched on is our community service that we do. Another project that we decided to tackle on was the Ronald McDonald House, and we made a meal just one night for food for the families there. And this really goes back to the core values of why Mayor's Youth Council was started, and that's kind of shedding light on the businesses and the opportunities that we do have here in Springfield. And the Ronald McDonald House is just one organization that's actually a positive influence in making a difference in our community. They provide financial stability through food and housing for parents who have children that are in the hospital. And for us to be able to take on a project like that, kind of put our mark into our community and kind of give back to those that have given to us is really important for us. As we reflect on all the things that we've done this year with the bracelets and different community service projects, we want to, first off, thank Mr. Jim Langfelder, our mayor and leader of this group, for challenging us to tackle on the problems that are going on in the community, to give back feedback of what we're seeing in our schools, and giving us a voice that the young people can speak on and kind of make a difference here in Springfield. So I want to thank you.
Now, that's teamwork. But special thanks to Bonnie Drew and Peggy Cormany. Peggy represents School District 186. They really helped coordinate the efforts this year, so we can't thank them enough. And I'll just read once or twice, but I'd ask each of the students to come forward as I call their name. But it reads, "A certificate of appreciation and recognition of your dedication. The City of Springfield truly appreciates the time you have given to share your ideas, insights, and goals to improving our great city. Mayor James O. Langfeld and the City Council acknowledges each one," and the first one's Kayla Sek, "as a member of the 2018-2019 Mayor's Youth Council." Thanks, Kayla. Appreciate it. If you want to stand here, we'll get a group shot. Next is Paige Price. Stuart Ross. And Stuart and Paige are from Southeast, and Kayla's from SHG. Samuel Growth from Lutheran High School. Zaire Harris. And Zaire also helped with the Lincoln Colored Home in trying to raise awareness for that historic treasure. And you're from Springfield High, right?
Yes.
Alderman Sinore's alma mater, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
And mine, mine too.
And then, last but not least, Kennedy Green. She's with SHG. And then, we do have other students from Lamphier High School that couldn't make it, and some others from the representing high school. But we'd also like to present Peggy Cormany with a certificate of appreciation as well. And Bonnie, if you'd come up and take a group shot?
Thank you. Handshake?
He didn't get in here, Bonnie. Squeeze in there.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Next, I'd like to ask representatives from ACE. We have George and Lucy Preckwinkle, if you'd come forward, along with the FBI Academy, and representatives from Lowe's. And we have a special proclamation for the Light the Community Blue. It's in support or showing support for our law enforcement agencies, our men and women that serve us each and every day to keep our community safe, regardless if it's at the federal level, state level, or local level. We're asking residents to use blue light bulbs that will be given out at ACE Hardware as well as Lowe's, and I'll ask them to say a few words after I present the proclamation. And it reads, "Whereas every day, Springfield police officers, along with other law enforcement agencies, work tirelessly to protect our citizens, enforce our laws, and keep our neighborhoods safe as they report for duty, knowing full well the dangers they face and the sacrifices they may be called upon to make. And whereas, we can never fully repay each officer for their service, but we owe a profound debt to all those who have worn the badge and to the families whose support enables them to serve with courage and pride. And whereas, the FBI Springfield Citizens Academy Alumni Association, in partnership with local businesses, organizations, and community leaders, is asking residents to light the community blue from May 12th through the 18th, 2019, to show support for the law enforcement during National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas Springfield ACE Hardware Stores and Lowe's are providing free light, blue light bulbs to residents to replace their current outdoor light with this color to convey a message of respect, solidarity, and support for our law enforcement officers and their families. And whereas policing is an extremely difficult job, and our officers are the first points of contact in many of our community, oftentimes in moments of vulnerability, and they do a remarkable job. And whereas today, we encourage residents to show appreciation to the men and women in law enforcement and light the community blue as we continue to work together to make our community safe and strong. Now therefore, I, James O. Langfeld, Mayor of the City of Springfield, together with the Springfield City Council and residents, do hereby recognize May 12th through the 18th, 2019, shall be Light the Community Blue Day in the City of Springfield in honor of the National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day." On behalf of ACE Hardware and all of our employees in Springfield, we are delighted to be a part of this year's campaign to light the city blue from May 12th to 18th. We'll be, we've already started giving out over 1,200 bulbs in Springfield, and it's to the customers that come in now till they're gone, which I'm assuming about two or three more days. So anyway, we're just delighted to be part of it, to show our support for both the law enforcement and their families. It means a big deal to our community to have everybody come together and support each other. So thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Joe Nybar. I'm the store manager at Lowe's on Wabash, and I'm with Roger Cook. He's the store manager at Lowe's on North Dirksen. We're proud to support our local police officers and law enforcement officials. We will be giving out blue bulbs starting on Friday, May 10th at 9:00 a.m. until they're gone, so we're expecting quite a few people coming in that day. We've got a lot of response already that want to explore at our local police department, so thank you.
Good evening. My name's David Graham, and I'm representing the FBI Citizens Academy Springfield Alumni Association. Have other members of our board with me today. As strong supporters of law enforcement in general and the local communities, efforts by our Springfield Police Department, the multiple other law enforcement agencies in the region, we want to say our thanks and have helped initiate this response so that we can paint the town blue, have blue lights for everybody that can get them, so that we can show our support and solidarity for our members of our law enforcement community. So we thank you for your support. We thank ACE. We thank Lowe's, and of course, we thank our gentlemen and the, and women who serve in law enforcement. Thank you very much.
Just to kind of echo what everybody's already said, you know, we cannot complete our mission without the community's support, and that visual sign is something that means a lot to the officers. It's just like when you're driving into Sixth Street and the first time a UCD put up the sign that said, "Support local law enforcement," that really means a lot to you, because sometimes we get lost in the headlines of what's going on around the country, and you get kind of caught up in that, thinking, well, there's not a lot of people that support us out there. And we're very lucky in the City of Springfield to have that community's support, and with that, we can accomplish a lot together. So again, just thank you to Lowe's, thank you to ACE, and everybody involved, the FBI Citizens and Police Academy for supporting us, and hopefully, they run out of all the blue lights by tomorrow, so Lowe's can get all theirs out on Friday. So, thank you.
Yeah, they brought some blue bulbs for everybody, so while supplies last. But Lee Milner, he couldn't be here. He's also coordinates activities with the FBI Academy, so we really appreciate all his efforts. Next, I'd like to call upon Doc Mordock and Coach Weber and other coaches and students or players from Little Flower School. Would you like to come forward, please? You can stand back here. Thank you, Mike. And Little Flower School, it might be one of the smaller schools in Springfield, but they're mighty, and they ended up placing third in state this year, and they represent the city well. And I'm partial to Little Flower, actually, I was baptized in the Quonset Hut, which is no longer there, but went to Blessed Sacrament, but then my children went to Little Flower School. And I'm not of basketball prowess, but I really look up to your efforts in that regard. And it reads, "Whereas Little Flower Catholic Grade School has educated children from the community for seven decades with the values to praise, to bless, to preach, and today we take a moment to commend the Little Flower eighth-grade boys' basketball team for their accomplishments. And whereas the Little Flower eighth-grade boys' basketball team represented their school with dignity and pride during the 2018-2019 season with 24 wins and six losses. And whereas teammates Ashton Bacon, Brock Bordenkircher, Matthew Goldisich, Cal Johnson, Dewan Jones, Cole Kesping, LeBron Cottrell, Seamus O'Brien, Michael Prose, Ryan Shade, Zach Taylor, and Gary Smithers Weitzel showed solid communications, determination, perseverance, and persistence each game. And whereas the Falcons worked hard, was rewarded when they became the 2019 Class 1A IESA Regional Champions, Class 1A IESA Sectional Champions. And whereas the Falcons had an incredible run and made their school, parish, and community proud when they placed third in the Class 1A IESA State Tournament. And whereas we greatly appreciate the volunteer time, devotion, and support provided by head coach Fred Weber and assistant coaches Brent Bordenkircher and Matt Goldisich, along with the spiritual guidance and mentorship from Pastor Father Alan Kemi and Principal Dr. Bill Mordock. And whereas these young men went up against tough competition, yet held their composure, worked as a team, and represent the City of Springfield with pride. Now therefore, I, James O. Langfeld, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with the City Council and our residents, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, May 7, 2019, shall be Little Flower eighth-grade boys' basketball team day in the City of Springfield and call upon all citizens to formally recognize the eighth-grade boys Falcons for their excellence during the 2018-2019 season.
So, in the famous words of one of my mentors, so, "Great players make for a great school and a great community and a great coach." So, I couldn't be more proud of this group. We had a few newcomers this year, and they banded together, so I'm really proud of them, and I'm really proud of the support the City of Springfield's given us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Doc, you want to say anything? Doc Mordock, we were recruiting him from SHG, and we're blessed to have him at Little Flower.
Well, as Mayor said, I've been out to Little Flower now a couple of years after '27 at SHG, and I can tell you that formation of kids starts very early, and it's a partnership between parents and the community and the school. And we have a great thing at Little Flower, continues on with our great high schools in the area, and it's all about doing the right thing at the right time, and these kids demonstrated this year. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, you want a picture?
Get in there, Mayor. Come on, get in there. He misses masks too often.
Parents, if you want to come up to get a better picture, feel free.
Who's the shortest one on the line?
Hey, Mayor, you might not even make a center on this team. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good to see you, Doc. Congratulations. Take care. Good to see you.
Congratulations, guys. Good job. Good job. Good job, fellas.
Next, I'd like to call up Scott Noll, and I'm not going to read the proclamation, but I'll ask Scott to say a few words. It is, this week is Travel and Tourism Week, and Scott's done a great job of leading our department in a short period of time, so we appreciate all your great works in moving the City of Springfield forward with regards to tourism, which is one of our main economic drivers in the City of Springfield. So Scott, if you'd like to say a few words?
Okay. All right. Yep. All right. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And on behalf of the 12-member team at Visit Springfield and the $450 million impact annually that we have on Sacrament County, we help sell 800,000 room nights, we generate $9 million in local taxes, and create 3,400 jobs. So tourism is certainly an economic driver in Sacrament County. So on behalf of the 12-member team, thank you very much for supporting tourism, and I will say as well, please pick up our new visitor's guide, the Capital City Visitor, and be a tourist in your hometown this summer.
Thank you, Scott. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the April 16, 2019 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
They'll move.
Second. They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
They'll move.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
They'll move.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2017-103, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, and 2019-169 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-184, an ordinance authorizing architectural services from REL Design, Inc., architects and engineers, in an amount not to exceed $92,400 for Phase IV of an architectural valuation for two facilities for a total amount not to exceed $204,200 for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-184 on final passage.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion?
What fund is this coming out of?
It's out of electric, fund out of our TND area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2019-188, an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement with Hotel and Leisure Advisors, LLC, for a feasibility study to determine the viability of the development and construction of a sports complex in wards two or three for the Convention and Visitors Bureau in an amount not to exceed $35,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-188 on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? Alderman Han Aaron?
Yeah, the only concern I have is, I'd like to, I really would like to see this stay in committee until we get this first, until we get this first study done. I think having dual studies is somewhat, you know, they kind of conflict, I think, and I just, I think it would be better served for everyone just to hold it, let's get this study in. I don't, Scott, how long is that, that study expected to last, the one that's currently going on?
We expect our market analysis to be delivered in four weeks.
I mean, is this something that's, that has to be done right away, or can it wait four weeks? And I mean, it's just...
And by the way, SFA is scheduled to present as well, so they'll, they'll give an overview and a presentation on the analysis.
Alderman Turner?
I respect your opinion.
The market analysis is neither of those two. So I think there's a distinct difference between the two.
Alderman Sinore?
Yeah, I, you know, Alderman Hanauer, I also respect your opinion, but I did, threw a few numbers together, and if we're stuck on the $35,000 figure, let me tell you this. For any events that this facility would have, having traveled and played sports and had kids involved in sports, the $35,000 would come back in less than one weekend. I know Mr. Dahl would agree with me on that, and Director McCarty, if you would humor me on this. If you would take two room nights at $100 and do the 8.75% tax that we have, I think it would come out to about like $16.75, if I'm not, or $17.50 if I'm not mistaken. And once we do that math and we add, say, we had 40 teams here, and we had each of those teams having four room nights, I mean, each of those teams having four rooms for two nights, so that's 160 times two, if I'm not mistaken, so we're at 320. And we take that 16, $17.50 and multiply it out, then how long would it take us to get to the $35,000 figure? And while you're doing that, that's not including when people are in Springfield, that they would be buying Gatorade, they would be eating food, they would be going to the stores and buying other incidentals, and also they could enjoy other events that we have during the summertime. And I think that's approximately, I calculate 10 weeks in the summertime that we have, so with those 10 weeks, and just say they only had three events, that would be 30 events, and multiplying that out times a figure, I think we could recover the $35,000 in no time. So what kind of figure did we come up with, Mr. McCarty?
Well, I'll tell you what, I need to get some clarification on the assumptions you're using. Can you just have Tim send them to me and I'll get it done in the morning and send it out to everybody?
Okay, that's fine, but I, so, so since you can't get that to me, I'll use this figure. An average family of four would probably spend about $500 a weekend here. And you take that $500 and divide it by 35,000, you come up with about 70, if I'm not mistaken. So it would take 70, 70 families to arrive at the $35,000 figure, and we're going to argue about $35,000, which we could use this $35,000 as a total investment in the city of Springfield, to not only for these people to come and have events here, but to come and see the other things. And we tout Lincoln, Mayor. That's one of your biggest things, we're the home of Lincoln. So we could use this in conjunction with Abraham Lincoln and use this as an economic driver for the city of Springfield. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think as a reminder, this is a study to select, there's two studies. The one Convention Visitors Bureau is doing right now is a market analysis on what the area would be able to support with regards to sports complex. So it's not site-specific. I think the ordinance before us is more site-specific within Wards Two or Three. And then after that, I'm not sure if there's another phase because of the study, or if that's it. I think what would have to happen after that is financing package, if it's deemed appropriate, would come forward, but I'd ask Damian Johnson probably to come forward and, you know, kind of outline, or whoever would like to outline, the essence of this particular study request and then the next steps in the process, that'd probably be helpful.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
So I think the difference between our market analysis is this is Phase One. As we move into Phase Two and Three, and we look at site locations and projects, there will be studies done, but we were not planning to fund those studies. So we were, we were planning to fund the initial market analysis, and then when we get into Two and Three, typically the developer will pay for their own study. So I think that's the difference, what we're talking about here as well, is that down the road, the developer will pay for their study.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Repath?
Got a couple of questions before Mr., young man comes up here, but did we already give them $24,000?
No, I, I committed to approving that amount if the Park District would match, because I think initially the request was $50,000 for a study of this magnitude, and unfortunately, the Park District didn't step up to the plate.
So my question to you, Damian, if you wouldn't mind, is just kind of give us an idea of what the funding sources that you have set up already.
Well, I know the Mayor had one question, I wanted to address one at a time, if you don't mind.
No worries.
Mayor, can you restate your question, so I can answer that one to start with?
Yeah, if you could give an overview of what the study would encompass, and then what the next steps would be after the study's complete.
Well, basically, how, how we came up with our package was to look at the overall cost of doing several phases of studies. One would include the market analysis for a site-specific analysis that would lead into a feasibility study, that would also lead into the 11-year projection for the financial forecast. These things separated out will cost us about double the amount of, if we compared it, what we would have put them into one package. So the overall cost is 60,000 total, and the $35,000 as was matched to your initial, you know, statement for 24,999, I guess, to come up with the remainder to fund the entire $60,000 study that will give us deliverables, that we will deliver to our financial institution, who would then develop the rest of the complete financing package, which includes revenue bonds that will be sold, to start with, with the internal group of investors that they automatically have in a network to fund these type of projects. And another thing that comes out of this type of group of study is, you know, we don't know what all we qualify for until everything has been studied for this site-specific analysis for Star Village.
Great. Alderman Repath?
Do you have any revenue lined up, any, any revenue sources lined up right now?
Right now, we, we are using mechanisms that other communities have alluded us to, locating, and the primary driver with those is revenue bonds that other communities have, have used for the successful, you know, delivery on their projects. So like I said, the initial part was looking at revenue bonds that our organization does qualify for to start with, and we're going to look at other mechanisms as the study is ongoing, so we will be able to make a better determination on, you know, the totality of things that we qualify for as an organization.
Thank you.
Alderman for Genzy?
I haven't heard you name a specific entity that's going to be financing it. You talked, you alluded to the fact that we're going to be looking for it, but do you have anybody in place right now that will be financing the project?
Yeah, currently, we're working with BB&amp;T Capital Markets, okay, that, they're the entity that we're working with as our financial institution, that will also serve as our underwriter for the financing package to start with, the selling of the revenue bonds and other mechanisms thereafter.
Do you have a letter of recommendation from them, or is there anything we can go on?
We, we do have an engagement letter. I did not print that out for everyone tonight, but I can email that to everybody if you'd like to take a look. I know, Mayor, I shared that with you in previous meetings, along with Alderwoman Turner and Alderman Sinore. I shared that in previous meetings we've had, also with the county as well.
I think before, I, I would vote for it. I would like to see some letter of support from a financial institution that says they're going to back this project.
Oh, absolutely. We signed what they referred to as an engagement letter back in December of 17, actually, when we were looking at, you know, what they would require for us, and that, you know, generally requires that municipality or a makeup of some kind, it could be private people coming together to fund this, but they were looking at, you know, a study package like we're presenting, you know, to be considered, to be delivered to them. That is something that they could not also fund on our behalf, being that they're looking at the, the rest of the bulk load when it comes to financing the, you know, providing a financing package for Star Village.
Alderman Hanauer?
And what's the scope, I, I know, what, a couple of years ago, you came in and showed us, it was a very nice presentation.
Yes.
What, what's the total, total cost, total scope of the project, or have you, have you, have you kind of pinned that down, or is that still?
Yeah, it's, it's still a significant project. It requires a $300 million investment that BB&amp;T is in total support for us with. You know, the package is going to study two essential new industries, and that is amateur sports tourism, as well as the hotel, leisure industry as well, which is a billion-dollar, 100 billion plus, you know? So we're looking at these two independent drivers to be able to drive better sustainability for our project as we move forward. Projects like this are looked at differently than in years past, because the traditional sports complex slash community center, which we have embedded into one project for further sustainability, we're looking at doing things a little bit different, just so we can come into an increasing competitive market to be able to compete. And I think that the citizens of Springfield and, and the current population that we have, you know, we're, you know, producing here in Springfield Division One athletes and, you know, all-division athletes, and have a few pros here and there. I just want to have everybody to work with me and keep an open mind on this, that we're doing this with virtually no facilities, and that's what the initial, I don't want to call it a market analysis, but that's an initial take on our community, that there is nothing virtually that's measurable here just yet. And that's what makes this study and this process leading into Star Village so much more intriguing.
Alderman Thailand?
A few questions on some of the things that you said.
Yes.
When you're talking about the revenue bonds, you're talking about this financial institution would be offering bonds to sale to the public.
Yes.
How much of your...
I'm sorry.
How, what, what range of bonds are you hoping to sell? Like, what, have they told you anything about what the, the price would be, what the return would be, what, what, what are they looking at selling? What, what is the actual item bond that they're looking to sell?
Revenue bonds is the most consistent mechanism that has been offered in other projects, and that's what they're going to begin with, with us. We don't know the totality of what they're going to be offering until we have a feasibility study package delivered to them, so they can look at the totality of the project and, you know, figuring out if something comes back that, you know, our organization, based on numbers, qualifies for a different type of mechanism, then they'll look at doing a combination or looking at something totally different.
Okay. And then previously, when you came to us, and like Alderman Hanauer said, the presentation you had before was very impressive, and this is, this is something that, you know, if, if we had a Warren Buffett, like, who wrote the nice check for, was it Peoria Zoo not too long ago?
Decatur.
Decatur Zoo, that would be great if we had somebody like that, but we don't.
Yes.
And with the school district having the pending 1% tax that's going on county-wide, I think the tax wells are dry.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that the Park District has the ability to come up with any funds at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think the city has the ability at the moment, and I don't necessarily know that there would be a possibility of a referendum to pass a tax that would help pay for it. So previously, you had mentioned that you were looking for some public funding back in the previous time that you came to us. Is that still part of the plan this time?
Well, we, we're going to look at those as part of our incentives that we will look at for consideration, when we have our financial institution look at all the sources that we would essentially qualify for. That's no different than any other business here locally, or any other project that has been studied that's similar to Star Village around the country. We took recommendations from, you know, members of this panel here and members of the community to look at how other communities have delivered on these projects, and, and we're using those exact same mechanisms and possibly some new mechanisms that may come about just for our particular location here in Illinois, with some new tools that may be, you know, that we will qualify for possibly.
Okay. And then, I guess, the other question I have for you is, a lot of discussion has gone on about the fact that CVB has their own study going, that you're, that you're wanting to have what would be essentially a competing study. What happens for you when the two don't agree?
Well, I...
Let's say, let's say the more expensive study, that is market-wide, let's say it comes back, and heaven forbid, it says that we can't sustain something that size here, and your study has a different response, how will the financiers look at this? Isn't that going to be something that would be, could be potentially damaging to your fundraising efforts?
Absolutely not. And that's the whole purpose of having a, a project-specific study package for us. The, the reason for that is, you know, I hate to even bring it up, but, you know, because I think there's, you know, there's two totally separate type of studies, but what CVB is doing, is studying just the sports, amateur sports market. Our project is studying so much more than that, okay? Because we, remember, we have two separate new industries that we're going to introduce to the city just for that sustainability piece, that will also help set us apart from other projects in our region and hopefully across the nation. We, we as an organization took this very, very seriously, and we want this to be the very, very best project that members that, that I worked with in the past and currently has ever seen, okay? We have a lot of experience here collectively in visiting various complexes, and, and we visited as a group and things like that, so we want to make sure that Springfield enters, you know, can possibly enter new industries and be very competitive.
And I guess my last question is more for Val Yezel or the Mayor. Is the site that they're talking about, are we looking at something that's potentially within a TIF district that's already existing, or is this something that's an area that is a potential future TIF district?
I think what they'll look at is in Wards Two or Three, I think they're looking in that general area, geographic boundary, but, so it may be or may not be.
Yeah, I've never been given the information as far where you're looking specifically. I think there are some areas that they've talked about, like last year when we talked about this.
Yeah, I, I can get some clarification on that. Within our study package, we will study the corridor for Dirksen Parkway, beginning at Stevenson Drive, and continue on to, not Stevenson, but Stevenson Drive to Sagamon Avenue, I apologize. So I know that there is a Far East TIF within there, but I'm not sure what the possibilities is. And I know there's, there's a Far East TIF, and there's another East Side TIF, so, you know, those are all falling in within the, the study range, so they will all be considered.
Alderman for Genzy?
How many areas have you selected or noted that have enough land? I think one time you said that needs 120 acres. How many areas along Dirksen Parkway do you find that need, that have 120 acres?
Well, we have to use some very creative vision, you know, with this, given the East Side, a large portion of the East Side is a lot residential, so we would, you know, have to look at some other possibilities, but we have essentially three, maybe four different locations that will have that type of tract in those two wards.
That have 120 acres?
Up to 120 acres, you know, we have some that may be broken up, just for example, the, the new Stanford Avenue that the, you know, road was just finished to link up the east and west side of the city. You know, there, there's properties in there, I think there were two 60-acre tracks in there, you know, so there, there's going to be some creative processes to that, but that doesn't discount the fact that, you know, this project, as well as a lot of others that are occurring out throughout the country, are different than what we are used to, and they're taking on this village-type of format, and, and I think with Star Village and, and the, you know, amenities that we plan to introduce will fit into different scopes like that. They would just have to be, you know, arranged a little bit differently than we had planned, but we have a very talented architect and engineer that, you know, will definitely be involved in that process, you know, and already have, so.
So we're not talking about 120-acre tract, we're talking about a total of 120 acres in two or three segments?
Yes, you know, and, you know, we do have other possibilities, but yeah, we, we're looking at it and trying to be as flexible as we possibly can with using the opportunities that currently exist.
I'm sorry, but I think we ought to...
But we have a very talented architect and engineer that, you know, will definitely be involved in that process, you know, and already have, so.
So we're not talking about 120 acre track. We're talking about a total of 120 acres in two or three segments.
Yeah, it, it, yes. You know, and, and, you know, we do have other possibilities, but yeah, we, we're looking at it and trying to be as flexible as we possibly can with using the opportunities that currently exist.
I'm sorry, but I think we ought to look at the totalitarian of the whole project that we've got going on now and then come back to discuss your project when you're more site specific and when you have a funding letter from the, what is it, BBC?
You, you will get that in the morning. I have that. Okay? So that's not an issue.
We're going to vote tonight, so maybe, we've already got a motion on the table, but I'd recommend we hold it in committee until we get the other study.
Alderman Hanauer?
I'll second John's motion, but okay, just to, just to make sure I understand this. Mr. Johnson, you said that your study, you said it costs 60,000.
That's the total, yes.
Okay. We're giving you 35. Where's, do you have the other, maybe you said it and I missed it, but.
Okay.
I know you, this includes the, the 25,000 or whatever it was that you had talked about. So, so we're giving, do you have the other money is what I, what I'm, I missed that.
25 plus 35, that's 60,000.
But this is.
That'd have to come back before council. I could approve up to 25,000 without council approval.
Yes.
But it's, uh, corporation council can correct me if I'm wrong, but anything over that amount would have to come back before.
And that would be a total amount together for 60.
Right.
So my point, and, and that's where, I mean, I, I.
No, it doesn't. 25 can go, the mayor can make an executive decision for 25,000, but anything above that has to come back to the council.
I thought if you spent a dime more than that on the same project, once it crosses the $25,000 threshold, it has to come to the council.
Corporation council. I'll give my, I'll give my legal opinion, then we'll ask corporation council.
What are we going to do with that, Chris?
Over 50,000 has to come before city council. And it depends if this is a professional agreement, then if it is, it's anything, I think, over 25,000.
We've had other things that.
So corporation council?
It would be my view that anything in the nature of a professional service, which this appears to be.
Hold on a minute.
I'm sorry. Apologize. Sorry. Anything that is a professional service, and this certainly I believe appears to be that, a professional service by an expert to provide an opinion or a study, anything in excess of 25,000 has to come to the council for an ordinance. I do not think that if a council, if the council passes an ordinance for 35,000, for example, for a contract for, for a professional service, that then that can be added to for an additional 25,000 without a further amendment. And you see amendments typically, I don't know, there's some tonight. For example, the earlier one with the architect where there was an additional 94,000 bringing a total not to exceed 204. So the 35,000 would only be able to be added to for this contract with a, an additional ordinance or an amendment. And I think that's consistent with the way we've always both interpreted and enacted.
Because it's the same service, correct?
Yes. Same contract.
Same.
Yes, sir.
Same vendor. And I think it's above 50,000, which is the threshold that we're, we're held to, right? Anything above 50,000 regardless if it's interpreted as a professional agreement or not. Is that correct?
The spending can be up to 50,000 for a non-professional service contract. And that's why you get a contract report every month that shows expenditures and so on. Then it goes through the normal bidding process or proposals, et cetera, through purchasing.
So when I'm, when I'm, if I can, Mayor, what I'm hearing you say, corporation council is this ordinance at $35,000 isn't enough to complete the study unless it's amended?
Yes, I, I had been under the, again, not complete information, I was under the impression that this was to fund half of the cost and that the additional half was coming somewhere else, but I'm not, I was not aware of exactly the, where the additional money was coming from.
My understanding from a previous meeting was that we had a commitment for the 24,999 and the mayor had suggested to both Alderman Turner and Alderman Senor that you would have to go to city council to get approval for the remaining dollar amount to fund the entire study package. And that, and that was the reason for the language in this ordinance that we have. So that was our understanding and that's what, how we brought it about.
The clarity is originally we were asked for 50,000, correct?
Yes, that's, and that was prior to our conversation with the county, which wanted to study a larger area.
And the Park District. And we asked that each one of them would partner with us. And I said, I'll give you up to that amount. You find the other half and then you can go, you know, forward with the study. That was a year or two ago. And so this request is not, I'll give you 24,999 plus additional city funds. I mean, that's what it's all about is how do we come together as a community? And quite frankly, this is a Park District initiative. I mean, this is recreation. We gave up our assets with regards to this, not this city council, previous city councils gave up the city's recreational assets to the Park District. And so for them not to step up to the plate, you know, for me, it's disingenuous. I mean, they should be working with us at the table. And so that's a conversation that we should work towards. Maybe Alderman Thailand would be able to move it forward in that direction, but that's what it really should be. So we can work in partnership. But Alderman Proctor had a comment or a question?
Well, I, I, I want to respond to your, your wording right there. We, we proposed the Park District and we sat with the Park District in four different meetings. I, I'm not going to beat that horse any longer. Quite frankly, I don't think we even need them. Okay? We have talented individuals that we're currently working with in the community. They, they made a decision that they don't have the capacity to work with us. And so we, we chose to move on. Okay? We think this, this project is too valuable and the city is in such dire need, especially in wards two and three, that we must work, uh, move on as we are. And we feel confident with that. And I understand the history that the city of Springfield forewent all of their assets and, 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 you know, we've suffered for that. And as individuals such as myself that are willing to step up to the plate to bring about an organization that will begin to correct some of the action that has taken place. Because we, we felt as an organization and, and a lot of people in the community felt that we, we have suffered for that and it's time to turn things around. And, and we, we finally got a project that is in our minds, the, the best project for our city to be able to thrive both locally and to invite new visitors into the community for further sustainability when it comes to having a world-class project such as this. So that's where we are. Mr. Proctor.
Alderman Proctor?
You've mentioned that you're looking at other cities or municipalities that have kind of thought about this or have done this and the mechanisms that brought this to be. Can you describe some of those municipalities and how they've come forward to do this? And, you know, has it's been the same type of scale that you're talking about?
Well, yeah, absolutely. Throughout our research, our organization, we've interacted with many municipalities. One in particular, I shared the action video from Grand Prairie, Texas. You know, Mayor Janson and, and his group down there have done a wonderful job. Grand Prairie just happened to sit in this, the center of the metroplex, which involves Dallas and Fort Worth. You know, they, they have a tremendous draw, but the city of Grand Prairie is, is virtually identical to the city of Springfield when it comes to population. And, you know, and, and that's what drew us to their project. Another thing that drew us to their project was just pure research. But through our research, we found out that our consulting firm actually did the work for that project. So we were looking at, we were extra interested in Grand Prairie at that point when we found out hotel and leisure advisors were involved in that project, which they have, after five years of construction, they have all parts in, they have some private entities that develop some other businesses such as a new IKEA store and, and a few hotels that went about to support those projects. So when, when you, when we look at how we came about and became interested in them, you know, we, we looked at, you know, those types of cities and we actually, I have contacted Mayor Jensen and some of the folks that worked on that and, you know, found out how they moved it about and, and they used a, a couple of different mechanisms to support that, which is a sales tax increase that they did elect to do. And, you know, they, down there, they had to send that to referendum. So they, the, the people of Grand Prairie did elect to do that and the rest is history. They have a 200 acre complex that they call Grand Central in Grand Prairie that they delivered. So they, they call it the people's place now. So there you go.
Alderman Senor?
One more question, and please don't take this the wrong way.
Yes, sir.
But after hearing all this, why would you still want to do this project for the city of Springfield?
Because I see so much value in my community that I, that, that I grew up in, that raised me. And there is no price tag large enough that can represent my community. I don't care if it's a billion dollars. Our people are worth it and we deserve it. We've worked 10 hard years to find the right project for this community to thrive. We want, you know, we, we've contacted everybody that was suggested to me and, and members of my board. You, you know, we have people that drop the ball sometimes and, and, and that's some things that we have to deal with. But I have tried everything in, in my body to move about a project for the people and that's what we plan to do. And, you know, regardless of how people vote here tonight, of course, I, I would, you know, love and appreciate everybody's support for this because I do think we can make a difference. And I think we can do it collectively. Yeah, some, some individuals, some entities elected to not participate. That's fine. Okay? But based on our information from our research, we, we are 100% confident that we can move about this project such as these other cities. I have 12 different examples and, and I can talk about this until way hours in the morning. Okay? I just have that much information. Okay? So to answer your question, first of all, I'm relentless when it comes to the work in my community. And, and everybody's gonna, you know, if you don't know me, you, you will know me. Okay? All right. My people and my track record of coaching and mentoring in this community is like none other. Okay? I work hard for the people that I work with and I look forward to touching and mentoring thousands of more. Okay? So that, that, that's my motivation.
Well, I, I appreciate that and we, we look for, for ways to not do something. I'm trying to look for a way to get this done for you and I appreciate your steadfastness and I appreciate you staying the course because I know how long you and your group have worked and I know how hard you have worked for this project. So Mayor, I'd like to call the question on that.
That's what I'm trying to get clarification from corporation council.
Damian?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't this need amended to 60,000 or it doesn't do what you need then?
Yes, if, if what.
I'm just trying to point out that the, the ordinance in front of us.
Yes.
Doesn't getting what he needs. So calling the question on it.
So, so how do we do it so that we can?
You'd have to amend the ordinance.
We have to amend it.
But Alderman Philginsy made a motion to send it back to committee and Alderman Hanauer seconded it, so corporation council is trying to.
For consent?
There was already a motion on the floor, so that motion has to be dealt with first.
That is a, again, we're getting deep into parliamentary procedure, but there's a, what is called the main motion, which is a motion to place on passage. There are motions under Robert's rules of order referred to both incidental and what are called subsidiary motions. A subsidiary motion is a motion that is, for example, to lay on the table, take from the table, postpone to a definite time, or commit or refer the matter, the main motion, to a smaller group. So the motion to refer this back to committee is in order and would be voted on first if we follow the rules of parliamentary procedure.
Discussion. Alderman Repath?
So if, if this goes back to committee, what do you, John, you made the motion? If this goes back to committee, how long are you sending it back? You sending it back till the study's done or you just doing it for 30 days? What do, how long are we sending it back? Hold on.
Personally, I'd, I'd want to make a motion to already look at the study that's on the table. And then in the meantime, he's going to give us some financial information, some documents to show who this company is.
Alderman Turner?
Your motion is to send it back to committee. We can't get into all these other motions that you want to make. You either want to make the motion to send it back to committee or you don't.
Right.
We, we're not going to go.
Just trying to.
No, I understand, but then he started going off into all these other areas.
I'm just trying to answer his question.
Well, do you?
Do you want to know or not?
The question, I want you to answer the question. The question was, how long do you want to send it back to committee for?
60 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So the motion on this one is to send it back to committee? Alderman Turner?
You know, I, I respect everyone's opinions and we've had discussion, a lot of discussion on this ordinance. Last week, we had about an hour's worth of discussion on it. This week, we've had close to hours' worth of discussion on it. My fear is that the motion that was made to send it back to committee is simply a motion to kill the ordinance. So I would ask that we take a vote on it tonight. And then after, and then after the study's done, if we want to make a, a replacement ordinance to bring it back, we can do that. But as the, as the co-sponsor of the ordinance, I would ask my colleagues to take a vote on the ordinance.
Mayor? Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I, I can, I'll withdraw my second. I.
So any questions on the ordinance or further discussion?
There needs to be a motion to amend though because the 30.
The ordinance is what it is.
But the 35 is not enough to do the stuff?
The ordinance is what it is.
It's on the floor with no second.
That, that is correct. Just to, to, so we're clear. If Alderman Hanauer removed his second from the motion to refer back to committee, so if there's no further motion, then it would be proper to vote on the main motion. If that helps clarify.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance fails, three voting yes, seven voting no. So can we vote to send it back to committee or how would that work?
You, once the, once the vote is taken, then that is a final action. That does not keep the committee from discussing it further or bringing a further ordinance or an amended ordinance. There's no bar or waiting period or otherwise, if that's the desire.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, we just passed a couple ordinances for over a million dollars. Nobody batted an eye, but we, we, we vote on 35,000 and every nook and cranny wants to be turned over and it wants to be scrutinized. And we wonder why things don't get done in Springfield. We can look around and see what's happened in Springfield and there's not much going on that really reaches down and touches the soul of people, especially in wards two or three. And we, we wonder, we wonder why Springfield is so separated. And you talk about the line down Springfield on, on 10th Street and, and it's real. It's very real because of things like this and, and a simple ask of 35,000 and it gets turned down.
I think the.
And no, sir, Mayor, I, I won't, I won't accept any comments, Mayor, trying to smooth it over. You, you do that.
I'm not smoothing it over. I'm just going to state the facts. The facts are.
We're not allowed to talk about you.
60, 60,000 needed. So come back with an ordinance. You say you like to work things out.
Makes sense.
You just said that two minutes ago. We need to work this out. And so the other study is going forward with the market analysis. It's almost like you're putting the cart before the horse because these, this one is site specific. The other one will say, okay, what will the area support? So it goes back to the county. We all talk about the EDC. That's the county initiative. We're helping out with that. But the county didn't step up. The Park District, we've helped them out with initiatives. They didn't step up. So that's what we should be doing is calling all the groups together that should be working together. I think you have a representation on the Park District. We have Alderman Thailand that's going to be serving on there. There's others here that are going to be serving on it. That's what we need to do is work together to get this done. I think everybody's in agreement that we'd love to have a sports complex, preferably on the corridors he's mentioning, because those are the corridors struggling. You know, I have family lives over there. I lived over there, you know, so it's not a matter of segregation. What this is a matter of is how do you get the resources to make it happen? And that's what we've been trying to do. That's why I proposed, I think it was about two years ago, wasn't it? About the 25,000, get the match? And nobody stepped up to the plate. But you cannot try to customize it in, in the guise that I'm going to come back and give 25,000, when we all know good and well that you have to come back before city council because it's over 50,000. So let's do it. I mean, you, you just present it as it should be. But really, who needs to be at the table is the Park District, is the county, because everybody's gonna benefit from it. So if you're really a true believer, let's finish this phase-one study that will really show what the community will support for sustainability. Because you cannot build something so grand that we can't support it, and it fails, or something so small that we could go larger. So that's what this initial study is about with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, with the advisory group that we put together. And so that's the direction that we'll have an answer in four weeks, but regardless, the door's not shut. You know, I'm gonna approach the Park District, we'll approach them again, but it has to be a private-public partnership with everybody working together to make it happen, as the passionate Damian Johnson had said. He's spent a lot of time on this, he's very passionate, nobody's questioning that. We want to see a successful project for the city.
So what you're saying, then, why didn't that study that came after this idea was on the table, why didn't that study incorporate this idea?
That study, we can call up the advisory group, they came to me and they said, we need to find out what the community will support. And it makes sense, I I'm in banking. First and foremost, you have to depend on what the market will bear.
I understand that.
When there's an ask for, he's gonna take the study, right, to a financial, I used to be in banking. He's gonna take the study, the final study, and said, here's the site-specific one. But then I would say, well, what will the market bear? And that's what the other study shows. The other study is the one that will show what the demographics in this area with our competition, Peoria, Bloomington, and other areas, what will be supported here in the city of Springfield and by the surrounding areas. So Scott Dahl can speak to the specifics, and, you know, so that's what that study will do. The next phase is a site-specific study, and that's like what he wants to do.
But the question I'm asking now is, since they knew that this study was already, we were already gonna do this study, why couldn't that study be incorporated in what they were doing? And we do, and join them both together.
Scott Dahl to talk about the different phases of the process.
If you look at things that can be done around here, you go to Jacksonville, look at Linsfield, you go to Bloomington and look at Game Time Gym, you go to East Peoria and look at the sports complex that they put up there. And I'm sure all of them have these problems and these situations, so why can't their study be incorporated into what you're doing?
Because we don't know what we need. I want to make it clear that we're not against any projects. We're not against Star Village, we're not against Powerplex. The only project we may be against is Xanadu, right? That's dead, but we're not against the project or the location. This is the first phase that allows us to know what the market will bear and what facilities it will bear. It may surprise you. What if the study comes back and says, really, Springfield's not in the market for U-Sports? That would be very shocking and very surprising, but then we're moving forward with projects. So all we're asking for is a little patience that says, allow this analysis to come through, allow it to show what our city needs as far as the facilities, and then build that into your project, wherever it may be. But it may surprise you. This market analysis, to my knowledge, has never been done. We've always had projects come forward, but we've never had a true market analysis. And again, we're not looking at any project or location, we're looking what's best for Springfield.
Alderman Turner.
This is, this is a, this is a project that has been discussed and has been on the on the table for at least ten years that that I'm aware of. And and I will say that, um, ever since Mayor Langfelter has been in the in the big chair, he has been involved in multiple discussions and meetings about the project, and he's really been trying to work on how he can push, push the project, push the project through. So I do, I do want to acknowledge his his participation and his support of the project. I think for me, um, it's, this is one of those things where, I mean, I understand, I understand the questions that everyone asks, and I understand the study that you're talking about doing, so, you know, I I don't believe that Alderman Senior nor I are, you know, trying to barrel something through, and we don't understand everybody's concerns and and this, and what, you know, what you're trying to do. However, having said all of that, I will just kind of reiterate some of my comments from last week about how we get into a period of time where everyone is concerned about specific parts of town, and they wanna, they want everybody to step up to the plate and and do something to address it. And then after that period of time passes, all of that concern kind of passes. And I do not want to allow that to happen. And I guess I would say that as long as I'm sitting in this chair, I'm not gonna allow that to happen. So what I would ask is that, um, as your study goes forward, you would engage with with Mr. Johnson on how, uh, you know, his project may be incorporated into whatever it is that comes out of out of the study. So I would, I would ask that you continue to engage him on a real level to see, uh, after the study is completed, how we can then move forward and possibly move forward in some way with bringing back an ordinance for funding for what he needs to have to get funding for his project. So we're talking about four weeks, which is not a long time, so, um, that's what I would ask, that you continue to engage Mr. Johnson, and we continue to work as a, um, everybody wants to talk about, we want to do what's best for the city of Springfield. So I would ask that we all continue to work in a fashion that will, uh, provide opportunities for all, for all of Springfield, every segment of Springfield, including wards two and three. So that would be my ask of you.
Absolutely, and I reached out to Mr. Johnson after last week's discussions as well. We did talk to him in early March for a length, quite a long time at that point, and let him know, you know, what our view was on the market analysis. And I just don't believe this is a up or down vote for the project. I think it's, you know, that we're putting the study in front of the analysis, and, you know, Mr. Johnson, Star Village, and the other projects will be able to take this analysis, and will be able to form it into their projects if they need to. We're not for sure what it's going to entail, but they can then form it and refit it into their project if needed, and really possibly make their project stronger.
And that's, and that's my ask. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Chair, oh, sorry, Alderman DeSanto.
And, Mr. Johnson, I respect, I met with you about this project, and I just think coming, going forward, if the ask is sixty thousand dollars, just ask for the sixty thousand dollars. That's not on you, uh, you know, if you if you had an agreement with someone else, and, you know, we just didn't know about it. But a lot came out tonight that I had heard for the first time, so, and I think others around the horseshoe that had heard for the first time. So we we want to do things correctly and in the way they're supposed to be done. I don't think there's anyone up here that thinks this is a bad idea or a bad project. So I don't want you going away thinking of that, because that's not where I'm, that's not where I sit, and that's not where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Chair will call for an ominous vote to place Agenda number two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-four, two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-five, two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-six, and two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-seven on final passage regarding appointments. Some move.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, say nay.
I need to vote present on one ninety-four, please.
Okay. I'll read them into the record. Two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-four, an ordinance approving the appointment of Collin Fager as Deputy City Treasurer. Two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-five, an ordinance reappointing Roger W. Holmes as Inspector General for the city of Springfield. Two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-six, an ordinance approving the appointment of Ryan J. Crook to the Mid Illinois Medical District Commission. Two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-seven, an ordinance approving the appointment of Jeff Stoffer to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agendas number two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-four through two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-seven on final passage. Some move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Turner.
Did we, I remember last week, there was a question that was asked about the appointment of the Deputy.
Judge Milik.
Uh-huh, Inspector General, was there, did you, do we have a response to that?
We will have a follow-on ordinance, we did a separate ordinance, so it'll be on first reading at the next council meeting.
I just wanted to.
I did check that, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open. Any ordinances passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to, for an ominous vote for emergency passage of Agenda number two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-five through two thousand nineteen dash two forty, Springfield Rail Improvement Projects and Little Flower Church Festival. Some move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion?
A discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Just a a money question on two thousand nineteen, two thirty-five. Mr. Jim Mole might be in the best position to answer the question.
Do the ominous vote first, or does that matter?
If he has a question to clarify, because it may not, it might have to be a separate vote then.
Okay. Yes, please come forward.
Two thousand nineteen, two thirty-five, Jim refers to twenty-seven million dollars of motor fuel tax funds. Is that over a number of years?
Yes, that that's over the duration of the project, and that's the work necessary to complete the project from this point, including the construction of the Railroad Force account work and the construction engineering. Those funds don't include the land acquisition and the engineering that's already been completed.
So could you give roughly the span of years that this spending of motor fuel tax funds includes?
Usable Segment Four projects should be completed the end of next year, so it would be fiscal year twenty twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
So, um, Phil McCarty might have a better recollection of this. As I recall, typically, we get about seven million dollars of motor fuel tax funds per year. So are we, is this an additional amount beyond what we normally get?
We'll be getting twenty-two million dollars of build grant money to to pay for this. So we'll pay for it out of motor fuel tax funds, however, will be reimbursed through, from the build grant, as well as we'll be reimbursed for the, some of the force account work for the railroad work, as well as the construction engineering from IDA. So we're going to be reimbursed for the project, and we will be billing.
And then all of the money that's the, and the listed in the MFT, the, is all reimbursable funds.
Okay, so you see my concern, I just wouldn't want all of our motor fuel tax funds to go to a single project without an arrangement to get reimbursement.
That's correct. We don't either, and we did a cash flow analysis and submitted that to OBM, and they evaluated it and approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the ominous vote?
Do we make, need to make a correction? It says construction engineering for the Sixth and Sixth Street on two thirty-five, it should be Fifth and Sixth Street underpasses.
Oh, yeah. Nice catch.
The Sixth and Sixth.
It should read the Fifth and Sixth Street underpasses usable Segment Four of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Twenty nineteen, two thirty-five.
Just a technical correction.
Take that note?
Yep. Yes, sir.
We need to make a motion.
Technical correction.
Or is that just a typo, or?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ominous vote, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion carries, two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-five, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty.
Million.
Oh, twenty-seven million. Yeah, I got a period there too early. I like the twenty-seven thousand better. Twenty-seven million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars, twenty cents may be used for construction, railroad work, and construction engineering for the Fifth and Sixth Street underpasses usable Segment Four of the City of Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. Two thousand nineteen dash two hundred, two thirty-six. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with Hanson Professional Services, Inc. for construction engineering services for usable Segment Four of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. Two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-seven, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation and Northfolk Southern to reimburse Northfolk Southern four million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars, twenty cents for their cost and allow the city's contractor to work on NS property for usable Segment Four of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage.
That was million on that one, too, Mr. Mayor.
And then how I read it?
You read it thousands, but it's.
Did I? Okay, I'll reread it. Four million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars and twenty cents. Two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-eight. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with the State of Illinois for land acquisition, land acquisition associated with the usable Segment Four of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project between Fifth and Sixth Streets for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. Two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a First Amendment to an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation to provide funding in the amount of sixty-four million, eight hundred thousand dollars for the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. Two thousand nineteen dash two forty, a resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route Fifty-five, Sixth Street, from Saint Joseph to Stevenson Drive for the Church of the Little Flowers Street Festival on May twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-five through two thousand nineteen dash two forty on emergency passage. Some move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? All those in favor of the ominous vote, vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open. And the ordinances passes, eleven voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business come before the City Council? The only thing I have as a reminder is the Integrated Resource Plan, the IRP. Link is on the city's website, springfield dot IL dot US, and the rotating banner, and that'll take you to the CWLP's IRP page. And then May twentieth, at the Lincoln Library, there is an open house, I believe that starts at five thirty. Is that correct? Alderman Thailand.
The first item, definitely, I feel, is unfinished. I was hoping to see it on first reading tonight, and it's not. But I think the confirmations for Director Dahl and Director Yezel need, I'd like to see those come forward. I don't know if it's the will of the rest of the council, but I'd like, that's something that I feel is unfinished business that I'd like to get done before I'm off the council. So I would even be in favor of emergency passage on, in two weeks. Does anybody else feel the same way?
We'll see what we can do.
Maybe the mayor doesn't want to, want to bring them forward. Think about that, Val.
Like to keep them guessing.
Yeah, Chris is gonna run the, he's gonna run it all before he leaves to go to the park.
Well, it's more, I guess, I just don't like leaving things undone.
He's gonna be the alderman, he's gonna be the mayor, then he's gonna go to the park, just.
And then the other one, and I'm sure that everybody on the council would agree with me. I was informed by our Madam Treasurer that Alice Ramey has a birthday today.
All right.
Alice.
Happy birthday to you.
Oh, boy.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Alice, happy birthday to you.
Congratulations.
And Tony, you need to, you need to cut that CD and send it to Alice, the DVD of the mayor, saying her happy birthday.
Any other unfinished business?
Either one. Uh, I just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor of two thousand nineteen to twenty-eight.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Alderman DeSanto.
Two things, I wanted to thank Chief Winslow for what he did yesterday, him and his force in Ward Six and Ward Two. They went door to door and spoke to the residents of Harvard Park, and it had a major impact. So I just wanted to thank him for that. He's out of the room, it looks like. And the second new business, Springfield native by the name of Kevin Bame. He was the original owner of Indigo Restaurant, and he won what is the Super Bowl or the Academy Awards and the Culinary Award. He won the James Beard Award for Outstanding Restaurateur for, I believe, his twenty restaurants in Chicago. He is a Southeast graduate, and Alderman Donlin and I are both, we both are friends with him and grew up with him. So it's, it's a huge deal that this, this guy came from Springfield, and he's built an empire. So I think it's something to be proud of, and so his mom still lives here, something definitely to be recognized.
Thank you very much.
National news.
Great, that's how we like it. Any other new business? We do have a, a vent. We do have a event this weekend, the Fat Ass 5K is having their street party on Friday from 5 to 11:30. Corporation Council said I could say it. And then on Saturday...
I was just trying to get you to say it again.
And then on Saturday is the start of the race, and that starts at 10 o'clock, and the street party goes till 3, and it's all for charity. So it's one of the great events downtown. Any other new business come before the council? We do have some people that signed up to address the council. One is Donald Martin. If you'd like to come forward, please. And as a reminder of those speaking tonight, if you address your comments to the chair, we would appreciate it.
My name's Donald Martin. I live at 904 Westview Drive, Springfield. And I know this seems terribly old after everything that's transpired this evening, but I've already addressed the City Council concerning the decisions we are moving forward with, and it's very disturbing that all of our expenses are exceeding our cost of living. The expenses that we should be able to achieve comfortably without any trouble at all is the foundation of our society and absolute base for our consumer pricing guide. For instance, adequate food supplies, adequate accommodations. We also need health insurance. Not only that, but we're supposed to be able to pay for all these after taxes, if you can imagine that. Not only do we not have our cost of living, I also read about inflated costs and feeds, plus it has been reported that the council missed proper date to move forward with setting their salaries. Not saying that it shouldn't be taken into consideration, but in any respect to a men's city code to accommodate personal satisfaction, should have been observed differently. We've had, I'm sure you've had salary increases. We haven't had minimum wage increases for eight years. This cost of living, to my knowledge, is related to our full-time minimum wage jobs. I mean, these are our bare necessities, the things that we were taught, we were able to pay for without any trouble with a full-time minimum wage job. Even if we can't, even if we can't obtain this idea, it's just in existence. I bring this to our attention because I am on medical provisions. In any respect, I started taking interest in our city, state, and also our country concerning our way of life, being as I'm no longer traveling, and given the time to actually unfortunately listen to the news and read the paper. For instance, learning that we tax our elderly a second time on 85% of their social security benefits, and the outrageous utility bills, we just, was just the beginning that I started adding up in my head as something unobtainable for myself, let alone our younger population. Life was something that was already unobtainable, or was obtainable, according to my grandfather, being able to do a great job raising two children and providing for a wife while able to accomplish and taking many vacations, plus being able to enjoy life. Not to say it was a walk in the park, nonetheless, it was achievable on one income, not able to do today. I also realize that technology's played an astonishing role in evolution. With this in mind, all this was still obtained on one income. And it's, seems to me that it's embarrassing to think we have developed a society where we are led into cohabitation, and the innovative ideas like our monetary system and infrastructure that we created as a human race is a great system and a means of fair trade in which was never meant to be the objective or taken advantage of. We have to start thinking about our future, long-term, and realize what we're causing for our youth and our very way of life, which should not cost us what's most important with, which is our life or our cost of living. We're the intelligent species of life on this planet. We know what the meaning of life is, and we also know that we created what we created down to every last detail, and that it doesn't need to cost as much as it does. The people before us has inflated costs to an idea. In order to be alive, it takes all of our money and time with no enjoyment unless we are led into cohabitation with one or two other people who have incomes. We all can't live like we were in college, and we are all independent individuals and should be able to live and have a great life at what we have determined as our cost of living. And I know this doesn't seem like too much, but with everything that's transpiring, if everything was more reflective to our cost of living, we'd be able to have money for the extra sports complexes and things of this nature. And I know this is just a mission statement, but, and I also appreciate your time to listen to what I have to say.
Thank you for providing a written copy. I gave it to the clerk for matter of the record. Thank you.
I didn't actually read the whole thing because I'd only have five minutes, but if you would take time to read the, the whole thing, it's, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angel Sides.
Is, is there any way I could give my time to the representative of Foresight Coal?
I mean, we'll go down the list. I don't, can you give, I don't think you give time. I think it's five minutes, so, but you can speak.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that we're moving away from coal. But there's one little thing that we have gotten away from in this country, and that is justice. We're not going to have justice unless we start holding people accountable. We've overspent more than $30 million since 2016 on a fraudulent coal contract, and unless we start holding people accountable and people start going to jail, we're not going to end the corruption in this country, in the state, or in this city. And it begs the question, the same reason we overspent and we were overcharged as residents here in Springfield for coal, is that the same reason we didn't turn to alternative energy much sooner? If you want to honor young people, then give them a future. At this point, we have 12 years before we have devastating effects due to climate change, and that money could have been spent elsewhere. It would have paid for a lot of sports complexes. That's why people like me run for office. We want to leave the world a better place for young people. But after I ran for office, something happened to me that was shocking. I wasn't even allowed to count my own ballots as a candidate in my ward. Why do we have hand ballots? We have hand ballots here in Illinois, but we can't count them? They're sealed? I'm asking for some kind of ordinance allowing for a public audit of the vote, allowing us to count our ballots when there's so much question right now about election integrity.
We'll pass that on to the county clerk. Thank you. Next is Roger Dennison.
Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to address you folks. I've got a few concerns I'd like to go through. You haven't seen me in a while, I think it was April 2016 or something. I knew you saw plenty of me since fall of the previous year. Anyway, my concerns come from defamatory, false, and damaging attacks on Foresight by a few of our aldermen, and specifically from my own alderman in the April 26, 2019 meeting. These attacks had no justification and no factual basis. Foresight Energy is a publicly traded company, and any baseless negative statements which are made are taken very seriously and can impact a public company. The alderman accused Foresight of playing dirty tricks, having a ploy, and being a liar. This is unacceptable, defamatory, and without basis. I'll take it personally because no one knows anybody at Foresight Energy but me. I'm the only person that's ever came here and addressed. I'm the only person that ever had the debate, the dialogue. I'm the guy. So when you say that, you're basically saying I'm the one that is a liar and played dirty tricks and had ploys, and that's absolutely not correct. I never lied or presented any false information, or as corporate counsel stated, provided any disinformation, only facts and information which the city and Arch did not want to hear chose not to use. I only responded to the RFP that was sent to me from the city. Was never called back to negotiate. The RFP said inside there, you'll be able to come back and negotiate. Best and final offer was never called back. So we went through with just our bid, followed the process, and that's what we did. We still stand by our bid, and I still stand by that there was over $30 million wasted in the five years in a contract, and be glad to start my stuff up again, but I've sat on my hands and been a good boy, and I don't want to do this again. But when I see, hear stuff like this, it really upsets me. There's no negotiation, there were no negotiations, as I stated, you know, that we would get together and do. And I can argue all the thing, and Doug, I'm respectfully, your presentation, and John, I respectfully disagree with everything that was in there. And I know that if somebody wants to publicly bring me here and go through those things, I could clean that up. Now Chuck actually shut me off that night, said, "Get out here, we're going to vote on this and be done with it." So I mean, it's water under the bridge to me, folks, on that. That's the way it works, so. But in that comparison, there were substitutions of that $39, and I heard that addressed last time. I know where this $39 came from, I'm not going to get into all that. It shouldn't have been put in there. The arbitration points, this thing should have went to arbitration. Keep in mind, CWLP built this coal mine in Elkart, because they had nobody to bid against. They were held hostage by the mines down south, and the wisdom of the mayors at that time decided that, you know, we need to get another competitor here. So that's where arbitration came from. Shell Oil and their three-piece suit lawyers and the city wrote that contract. So I'm going to guess, I went to arbitration. I don't think anybody in this room's been through arbitration. I went through arbitration, the city won, and I almost went through it twice, and we finally figured out, you know, splitting to pay and somebody just say split the baby doesn't make a lot of sense and spend a lot of money on it. So I've been through it. So to just say that somebody else can say arbitrarily, "We don't go to arbitration anymore," I would have thought Shell Oil Lawyers would have thought something different. Again, water under the bridge. But again, I'll be glad to debate anything anybody wants to. I'll come back out with my charts and graphs. I really think we need to re, just bury this thing, and I just want to be allowed to bid on a coal contract. And again, I'd be silent tonight except sitting in my office doing my work, and then I'm going, "Why is coal on my TV set watching, folks?" And I'm getting bashed, and I don't like that. And I was. I've been a gentleman to everybody. I've been upfront. Sure, I get emotional, and I'm passionate about what I do and what I do for the coal mine families, but that's just me. And as Doug knows, you know, I've been helping this, helping on your, the coal ash bill for this utility, and actually helped the Elkart mine. I actually helped my coal mines, too, when I did it. This SB9 was going to be a killer for utilities, and it's still a tough one. And I don't know if it's been addressed to you folks yet, but it's an industry thing that Fluidized Bed Task Force, I worked with them on. So, I mean, I still care about coal, and it's not that I don't like the coal mine. I grew up there. I built that coal mine. I did every job there. I was president of that coal mine. My parents still live there, and I got a lot of friends there. But on the street, we compete with each other. That's just the way it works, so, you know, that's all fine. So I don't want to stay here all night doing this. I do understand, and I, the whole time, I wanted to see this Ely report. Ely report said it's attorney-client privilege. Well, you guys are the clients. You guys said you wanted to have somebody do the report, and he's not a lawyer. Ely, so I'm going, attorney-client privilege for what? Anyway, doesn't matter, water under the bridge, but I've read the report after that. That report backed up everything that I ever stood up here and did, every chart, every graph, and said the coal price should have been where I said the coal price should have been. So again, water under the bridge. That's just part of it. I'm just saying, you can't have it both ways. You can't sit and say, "We can't use Elkart's pri, or your price for two years," because you can't take the ash. If I can't sell coal for two years, I don't have to take the ash till two years. That was the whole deal. We said we'd take the ash tomorrow if they took. We had a backup supply, we had a third-party guy to do it, but again, I had two years to do that. All this has changed now, but folks, again, I wouldn't be here saying it.
But we'll have, we'll have the RFP coming out before going through the coal. We had the report that came out with the IRP, so there'll be an open house on May 20th. So I encourage anybody interested in the processes we move forward, be sure to attend that.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and cut out the rest of these points. I mean, I love all you people, I get upset, but I'm just saying, I just want to be treated fair and right. I've never lied to anybody. I don't have to manipulate to do this thing. We're the biggest producer in Illinois. Our company's the biggest underground coal company in the United States. And we got good jobs. We do want to bid on this thing. You guys have something that everybody wants, and there's only two of us close enough to get it, and that's your scrubber. I really sucked when I saw the article, you know, in the paper yesterday about these units going away. Back in the day, these were the fourth lowest-cost power producers in the Midwest, not Illinois. Now, a lot of that was fuel price, and that was arbitration and right of first refusal, stuff that, as you said, Mayor, is on your guys' watch here. I'm just the guy's got the history on it. So I appreciate all that. Again, I've tried to be as respectful as I can. I just shouldn't go home and shut up again, and I just want to bid on a coal contract. It's what I'd like to do.
I come to the May 20th open house.
Okay.
People from the Energy Authority will be there, as well as CWLP.
And I got a separate topic, I know I'm out of time, but I also, besides putting in coal mines and permitting coal mines and trying to take care of that, I'm a registered lobbyist. This crap about donations and checks, honestly, you're exactly right, it didn't influence anybody. The only reason people do that, it costs a lot of money to run freaking campaigns and have ads on TV, and there's ethics in it, and as it was brought up, if there's something bad going on, guaranteed it'll be investigated. I support people that support my industry, and all I want is face time. I just want you to let me come in and talk to you, and doesn't mean you're going to agree with me. That's all that does for you, and you always will support an incumbent until they give you a reason not to. So, you know, this is a lot of static, and I'm on the other side of this, folks, so I'm really trying to say, I know it gets you folks upset when people do it, but I get it, and it's not. If you're doing something wrong, doesn't matter if you're speeding down the road or whatever, you're doing something wrong here, you'll go to jail for it. Well, that's not the case. So accepting campaign contributions, if it does make you do something screwy, that's a bad day, but I don't think that's happening. So I mean, I can talk all day on that, too.
Very much.
I do that every day. So I appreciate it. Anybody got any questions for me? Appreciate the opportunity, and sorry I took too much time.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the City Council? Birthday girl, come on up. Might as well close with the birthday girl.
No, not on her birthday.
Not on her birthday.
Is today her birthday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a problem. I love to gamble, okay? And I would rather spend my money in Springfield at a good casino than go up to Peoria, okay? I went to Peoria today to celebrate my birthday, and I come back even, which is very hard to do sometimes. But I want to thank all of you for singing "Happy Birthday" to me. It's been a long time, and my mother has been dead for seven years. I used to do it, and it just brought a lot of memories back for me. And I know I'm a little old, but not too old to understand, and pretty young that I would go for it, okay? But I am 79 years old and proud of every year that I lived, every year that I ever fought the mayor and his father, and every mayor in between. But thank you, Mayor. And remember, it's 64 million, 38 million, okay? And you're a banker. I mean, I thought that was kind of strange. I thought you knew how to count. Thank you, guys, and have a beautiful week.
Happy birthday, Alphabell.
Thank you.
We're adjourned, thank you.
They're my favorite.